All right, it is seven o'clock, so we will get rolling here at this time. I'd like to call the Crystal City Council meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. Let's start with roll call.
Councilmember Budacewski.
Here.
Councilmember Deschler. Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
And Councilmember Banks.
Here.
We have a courtroom.
Awesome. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us, and got to note that item 6.3 will be withdrawn from the agenda. So with that adjustment, looking for a motion on that agenda? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thanks, Nancy. Looking for a second? Brendan?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Our consent agenda includes a few items. First off, the city council meeting from May 7th, and the work session on May 7th, those minutes, approval of those minutes, and then license application approval for applications submitted to the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in the city clerk's office. And that was generic license applications, nothing specific. Okay. Third item is approval of resolution accepting the following donations: $7,500 from West Metro Fire Rescue Relief Association for Crystal Frolics, and $1,000 from the same for Crystal Airport Open House, and $1,000 from the same Relief Association for Becker Park Renovations. Thank you for West Metro for quite a few donations, $9,500 in all, so thank you for that and all these different causes. Next item on the consent agenda is approval of modification, modifications to the owner occupied requirements for city-owned lot sales. And last item is approval for temporary on-sale license application for the Church Festival, August 2nd to the 3rd at St. Raphael's. And that's at 7301 56th Avenue North. Looking for a motion for this? Olga?
I move approval.
All right, looking for a second? John?
I second that motion.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next is open forum. Is there anybody here wishing to speak during open forum? Have you got any slips for open forum, Trudy?
No.
All right. We will skip by open forum. We do have a couple of public hearings. First one is going to be to receive comment to consider a new on or a new off-sale liquor license for Zahad Beverage Group LLC, doing business as Crystal Liquor Warehouse, located at 6256th Avenue North. Trudy Tassani, our administrative service coordinator, is here to address the council on that, so welcome, Trudy.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Russell Zahid, the owner of Zahid Beverage Group LLC, doing business as Crystal Liquor Warehouse, has entered into a purchase agreement with the MGM Liquor Warehouse at 6256th Avenue North, and he is requesting an off-sale liquor license. The anticipated opening date of the new liquor license store is on June 1st of this year. Mr. Zahid meets the qualifications of Crystal City Code Section 1200, and staff has reviewed his license application. A background check was completed by the Crystal Police Department, and Chief Revering finds no reason to prohibit the issuance of the license. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Star Tribune on May 10th and in the Sun Post on May 16th. Staff recommends approval of this new license. The applicant, Russell Zahid, is in attendance tonight to answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening.
Evening.
So are there any questions for him? Go ahead, Nancy.
I had one, and welcome, we're excited for you.
Thank you.
We also wanted to, or I just, the thought came just as this came in front of me, and Stephanie, Chief Revering, does Russell know about the training for ID checks?
He was provided the information, I believe, when he submitted his application, yes.
Because that's one thing we hope we never, ever, ever have to see you here for, but to welcome you, for sure.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, this is the only time we want to see you.
Yeah.
I'll be back.
To welcome you.
Thank you.
If we see you in a different, it's not going to be cool, so.
Unless we're patrons, in which case, I'm very happy.
Right, right, right.
John? Could you talk about your process in terms of preventing sale to underage people?
Sure. Little bit background, I've been doing the liquor store business last 15 years, and never had one ticket, actually. It's actually very easy. I changed the POS system on the, you know, point-of-sale system, that we use a software that anything that we start even ringing, then it comes with a budget check. So unless we scan the driver license, it's not going to unlock the, you know, POS system right there. So that, one. And number two is training. Every week I have a meeting with my guys that, you know, just keep constantly reminding them, keep constantly reminding them.
So your cashier district locks up until they scan an ID?
Yes, so the way normally the software works, that every time, anything that comes into the, on the front, and then we just scan it. So it's not going to let you go to the step two unless we clear with the driver license scanning. So we need to have the driver license scanning, and if someone's driver license doesn't read, we have to do the manual entry, and then it will open up our screen so we can proceed with our other cells. So then it will give me total and everything. So that works very much, because sometimes workers, you know, if it's a long hour shift, sometimes they get disoriented or kind of forget or something. So this is every transition they have to do, they have to scan that, and then they have to scan the driver license or put the information for the driver license. So that's really effective, that works really nice.
Mayor, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
So just to paraphrase, you're carding everyone?
Yes.
Okay. And like, I just want to tell you that my 85-year-old ma would love that, you know, so there's no problem with that. She'd probably come to your liquor store all the time, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Nancy?
And a question too, how is the building coming along? Are you doing significant improvements?
Yes, yes, because it's about time.
Do you like to tell us a little?
Yeah, sure. I'm very excited to do that right now. It's about time the previous, the current owner, they're elderly people, and they're ready to retire, actually. And this store, we are going to change the building on the outside, brand-new paint, brand-new, the awning that we have over there, very old awning system.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to, it's so much electricity it takes, too. So we are going to change them to the LED channel letter signage, and open the windows, it's too much covered in right now.
Yes.
People cannot see, it's kind of scary place at the night, so we're going to open that up completely. And new lights in the parking lot, LED lights. Inside, we're going to change the floor. The floor is very old, so it's going to be brand-new porcelain floors, new paints, and also we're going to change the counter that we have. So counter is going to be more modernized counter right there.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Do you have an open house scheduled that you'd like to publicize yet?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And, but before I do that, I need to fix all this work.
Right.
Well, let us know.
First things first.
Of course, I'd love to do that. You guys are most welcome.
Well, thank you for speaking with us.
Sure, thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing for testimony. Is there anybody here wishing to give testimony in relationship to this item? Seeing nobody approach, anybody interested in comments? All right. We will close the public hearing, and...
Make a motion?
Yep, go ahead, John.
Okay. I move approval of the off-sale liquor license to Zahid Beverage Group LLC, doing business as Crystal Liquor Warehouse, located at 6256th Avenue North.
Thank you, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Nancy? All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for coming in.
Welcome to Crystal.
It's not rude to leave.
Unless you want to stay and...
All right. So next on our agenda, we have another public hearing. Dan Olson, our city planner, is here to address the council. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I have to state the purpose, I think, if I want to stick to what's supposed to be done, so. To receive comments, to consider a resolution vacating easements at J-Flow subdivision, and approving the preliminary and final plat for Iron Horse Edition. All right, you're on, Dan.
Okay. As you said, there are two action items related to this one plat, so I'll get into a short presentation on this. First, I'll just show you the site context. This is, of course, the current Iron Horse Park here, and the plat for tonight would be to split this western portion off into these three lots, and then the rest of this would be dedicated, remain as dedicated park, Iron Horse Park. And then also just to point out, this is the newly-approved Windsor Ridge Development in New Hope, so it's adjacent to this, and there's, this street will be connecting to both of those. This is the Windsor Ridge Development that I just alluded to, I won't get into a lot of detail about this, but this is, these would be the three lots in Crystal, that would be on the west end of the park, so they would connect with this roadway, road network. Just a little context here as well, this is a couple of aerial photos. The first here is, this is 1937, and then this is 1957. There wasn't a whole lot of change to these particular properties. This was basically farmland. This is, of course, is now Iron Horse Park, and then this is the Windsor Ridge Development. So the original lots that are now Iron Horse Park were platted in 1963 as the J-Flow subdivision. Development did not occur, so in 1973, the city acquired what is now Iron Horse Park. The property, the park property has never been dedicated or restricted for park purposes, and the only real recreational area in the park that would, in the part of the park that is being subdivided, is a backstop for an inactive ball field. So that's about the only thing that's really in that area. You may remember that in March, you declared the west end to be surplus land, and then the rest would be, as I said, dedicated as park. So the westerly one-fifth would be for the three new lots for home construction, and the easterly four-fifths would be dedicated as Iron Horse Park. Louisiana Avenue would be extended to service both these three homes, as well as the Windsor Ridge Development in New Hope. And these are the three addresses that would, Crystal would have, they would all be addressed off of Louisiana. And the proceeds from the three lot sales would go into the park's capital fund, which would provide money for park improvements. This is the preliminary plat for what's called the Iron Horse Edition. Again, these are the three lots that would be subdivided off to be accessed off of this Louisiana, as it would go southward. And here again is Windsor Ridge. Then the rest of the park would be dedicated as park on the plat. This is just a kind of blow-up of those three lots on the western part. Here again is Louisiana going south, and it would connect to what'd become 51st going into New Hope. This is the final plat, which you're also being asked to approve tonight, and this, it's very similar to the preliminary plat, they're both in conformance with each other. Just a little bit of information, the homes that we would be selling would be, they'd be required building setbacks, of course, and the lots themselves would meet minimum area width and depth requirements, so there's no variances here. New utilities will be installed in coordination with the Windsor Ridge Development in New Hope, and the planning commission determined that the proposal meets the subdivision criteria for approval in the Unified Development Code. So just along with that, you're being asked to hold a public hearing tonight as well to vacate easements. These are street right-of-way easements, which were, basically we're getting rid of the existing street right-of-way easements, and then we're supplanting them with new easements in the Iron Horse Edition. I did notify the four utility companies, three of them said that they had no objection to this, one did not respond, which is Excel. So after holding the public hearing, you're being asked to consider adopting the resolution to vacate the street right-of-way easements in the J-Flow subdivision, which is the existing plat. And this is the, in the yellow, this is the area of the street right-of-way that would be vacated, and then replaced again with the new right-of-way in the plat. Just for information here, this is kind of a concept plan at this point for the remainder of Iron Horse Park. This would be discussed in more detail at the July 10th Park and Recreation Commission meeting, but just want to kind of show it to you here. These would be the three lots that would be subdivided off, and then this is just an idea for having a trail that would connect to the new Louisiana Avenue extension. But this is just all in concept at this point, but. So just a little bit, just to end up here, the planning commission held a public hearing on this, and they recommended approval of the preliminary plat with the conditions that are in the staff report, which are fairly standard conditions. And staff is also recommending that you approve the final plat, which is in conformance to the preliminary plat. So your actions that you're being asked to do tonight are to hold the public hearing and then adopt the resolution to vacate the street right-of-way easements, and then secondly, to adopt a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of the Iron Horse Edition, with the conditions in the report. So I'm available for questions, if you have any?
All right, thanks, Dan. Any questions for Dan? Seeing none, all right. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for testimony in reference to the easement on the J-Flow subdivision. Is there anybody here wishing to speak or give testimony on this? All right, state your name.
Bert, order 6767 Avenue North of Crystal, Mayor, Council. Just one question, Dan, are we likely not to find any debris that may turn this thing around as far as putting in the new plat?
You mean just some debris in the soils, for example, maybe?
Right, right, like we found in that one that we had to buy back?
I'm not aware of that being an issue. I'm not sure if any in-depth soil tests were done?
John's got an answer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Dan, Mayor, thanks for the question, Bert. Yes, we did soil testing in this case, because we wanted to make sure we were a little more thorough, and while there is some minor soil correction needed because of some fill in the southerly lot, it's nothing significant, and there's nothing there in terms of debris that the soil borings discovered. We did a total of seven borings spread across the three proposed lots, so there's no indication that they would not be buildable.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wishing to speak, give testimony? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We have, first one is the vacation. Brendan?
I make a motion to approve the resolution vacating the street right-of-way of the easements in the J-Flow subdivision.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second? John?
So moved.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And for the next, you want to hit the next one as well?
Yes. Also make a motion to approve the resolution for the Iron Horse Edition preliminary and final plat.
All right, awesome. John?
So moved.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I meant to say aye, but I just had a comment.
All right, go ahead with your comment.
Related to this, on social media, there were several neighbors in that area that were very disheartened to learn of the removal of that wooded area in New Hope. And I just wanted to just make a comment. Dan, could you pull up that photo of the overhead from when it was farmland?
Sure.
I was very surprised to see that there were no trees at all 60 years ago. So that, all that growth was just, you know, wooded area, but it was an area of nature that was very much enjoyed by the residents. Bring their dogs there, their kids there, explore, walk the trails. It wasn't an official park or anything, it was just a wooded area, right? Private land?
In New Hope, you're talking about?
In New Hope.
It's one with the city of New Hope, yes.
It was, okay, great. So in regards to Iron Horse Park, I applaud the Park and Rec Commission members for pointing it out that we would like to, in Crystal here, maintain this as a park. So I'm very happy to hear that that was one of the contingencies, that this be dedicated parkland for the remaining four-fifths of that property. Okay, thank you.
Just a side note before John would say something about it. The wooded area, I'm sorry, the wooded area that's in Crystal is basically the new street extension, so the rest of that, most of that wooded area is in New Hope and part of that development.
Right, right. I know there aren't a lot of parks in that area, so it is nice to see that it's going to be maintained, so thank you.
And how many acres is the park, will the park be, the platted or dedicated park area?
The platted parcel will be a little bit under three, but then if you add the remainder of Suline Place, which will be used for the trail corridor and the existing parking lots, so it really is used as part of the park, it'll be over, just over three.
What was the minimum for the park?
For a neighborhood park?
Right.
1.7.
So it's a good double of a, you know, and it is encouraging to dedicate it specifically as a park for years to come.
Yeah, looking at that more recent overhead shot of the platted area, not this one, but I think prior, yeah, right there, you can see there really isn't a lot of parkland around there, so Iron Horse is very nice to see. I see some wooded area near this, I think, is that the hockey rink? I'm sorry, I'm turning around a little here. On the other side of the railroad tracks, I see some wooded area, but I don't think that's a park. I think that's just, okay, very good.
John, did you have a comment?
Well, I just, I wanted to add to what Councilmember LaRoche said about noticing that back in the 1930s and 1950s, none of this was really wooded, it was all just grassland or farmland. We ran out of space in the slides, so we didn't add this, but you can even go, it is until about 1985, to that aerial photo, that the trees start to really show up on the New Hope Development parcel. So that forest is probably about 40 years old. It was cropland until then. And it, and we have aerial photos going back every two or three years showing that. It was pretty much open land until the late 70s or early 80s, just an FYI.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So that motion carried. I think we're onto our regular agenda. Sir? Could you please state your name, your address?
Kyle Prolleberg, 6521 52nd Avenue North.
Yep.
Just in regards, touching base a little bit with the development for Iron Horse Park and with what New Hope is doing, possibly the wrong city meeting, obviously, since New Hope's development is in New Hope, but with the border being where it is, and being a resident along 52nd Avenue, I wanted to see if there's any information that I could pass on to my neighbors regarding the social media post today. My wife is a homemaker, and she counted, not that she didn't have other things she was doing, of course, but she counted 300 dump trucks going in one direction, so that's 301 trips, trips in one direction, not the return direction, in an eight-hour span. It was vibrating our home all day, and that's using, between Winnetka and Douglas Drive, using over half of 52nd Avenue in Crystal. Is there, has there been any discussion, or was there any plan in place with keeping New Hope's development as far as traffic, noise, wear and tear on the streets of Crystal, more in New Hope's backyard?
John, can you address that one?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, that, it wasn't addressed by me directly, but I became aware of it, and Mick Surt, our engineering project manager, contacted the city of New Hope. And we totally agree that the traffic shouldn't all be concentrated in Crystal for a New Hope development, but we have to start from the starting point of, you know, these are public streets, and we can't stop anyone from really driving on them, as long as they're not violating load restrictions or other things. But the reason, because I think this matters in this particular case, that there were so many trucks driving that same route, is because the trucks were importing fill from some location in the south metro, I don't know exactly where, coming north of Highway 100, and this is the, they were coming from the east, in other words. They came up to 142nd, 42nd to Douglas, Douglas north across the tracks to 52nd, and west to Louisiana. And so that is the most direct route for them, using county roads as much, and state highways as much as possible. That said, in the future, if, for example, concrete trucks start coming in, or there's stuff that's coming from a different direction, we expect that there will be a more equitable distribution of the traffic. But this particular material was all coming from the same place, and it was south on Highway 100. So there really was no other route that made sense to get it to the site.
I was just curious on why they couldn't continue up to Winnetka, if they're coming out of 100, taking a left, going west on 42nd, going up to Winnetka, to, and then taking a right against north on Winnetka, to come down to right where the construction site is, coming in the back way down Winnetka and 53rd?
To answer the question, certainly they could, but it would add one mile each way to each trip.
Yep.
So that's, I would guess that's the reason that they came the way they did.
Thank you, John. All right. Anything else, Kyle?
One other question, when they go to the next phase with the traffic coming in as far as the construction vehicles bringing in concrete, et cetera, will there be any notice for the city of Crystal residents to plan accordingly, et cetera, for, because we're beginning to...
I'm not sure what New Hope is doing for that, but we will certainly contact New Hope and ask that, that's something that the citizens would like, so we'll do that for you. Absolutely.
We'll be coming into, out of school time, there'll be a lot of kids on bicycles, I'm pretty certain.
I think what they'll end up doing is kind of give you a general outline as to what things look like through the development. I'm not sure at every stage of the project they're going to give you detail, but we'll make sure that you guys have some contact information if you do have questions for New Hope, and have them provide for you guys some information as far as what the timing of the project looks like. Does that sound fair? Yeah, I think that's, that's cool. All right, thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle.
All right. We were moving onto the regular agenda, all right. 6-1. So first item on our regular agenda is the dispersments of $25,000 or greater, we have a few of them. Custom Builders Inc. for the application payment number one for Becker Park Improvements, Waste Management for March Recycling for two head-upping recycling group locations, BCWMC Bassett Creek Watershed Management 2019 Assessment, that is $27,877. Cornerstone Advocacy Service for 2019 Advocacy Services for the Police Department, $39,096. Logist for May 2019 Support and Services and Mist March Payment, $64,173. Met Council for June 2019 Wastewater Service Costs, $130,159. Waste Management April Recycling Costs for Haddon County Recycling Group, $50,321. And total dispersments of $25,000 or greater is $912,291,067 cents. That is our $25,000 or greater list. Any questions on any of these? John?
I just have a question for the chief regarding the Cornerstone Advocacy Service. That's the service that helps with disputes between neighbors, correct? Is that?
No, Mayor and councilmembers, that's actually our domestic assault of use advocacy service.
Wow. And then, that's fantastic, I'm glad to hear that. And then after the meeting, I just have a question for you, if you wouldn't mind, so.
Sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on these? None? Okay. John?
I make a motion to approve the listed dispersments over $25,000.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, next we have Dan Olson back to address the council on the childcare... All right, next we have Dan Olson back to address the council on the childcare center. So, Dan, welcome back.
Yes, thank you. Yes, this is a conditional use permit request for a child daycare center at 7256, which is also known as Bass Lake Road. Too many people? This is the location of the site in red here. It's kind of on the edge of a residential and a commercial area. Some of this is in New Hope. This is in New Hope. This is in New Hope. This is residential area in Crystal. Whoops. Sorry about that. The applicant is, it's called A Better Child Care. That's the name of their business. And they are proposing to either buy or lease that property at 7256 for a daycare center. Just a few things about the daycare center. The applicant will not enlarge the existing building. It's formerly been a liquor store, but they're going to leave it the same size. The footprint won't change. The parking lot will remain the same size as well. The interior of the building will be renovated to have four classrooms, an office, and a kitchen. The daycare will have approximately 50 children and six full-time employees, and the operating hours will be 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And here is a proposed site plan, which just shows the existing building. The only change to the parking lot is they're going to stripe this area in the back. It's already there as pavement, but it's, they're just going to be striping that. And then a child play area will be here. And this is the proposed floor plan with the daycare rooms, the office, and then the Just a few elements I'll point out here. Our Unified Development Code requires 15 parking spaces, and they are going to be providing 25, so they, that is adequate. As far as child pickup and drop-off, that's going to be occurring in front of the building that faces 56th. And with the low number of children attending the daycare, traffic impacts are not expected to be very noticeable. Screening of the area from the residential area, that will occur with an eight-foot tall fence, which is already there, to screen, that was used to screen the liquor store from the residential area, so that is already there. And then at the planning commission public hearing, the commission determined that the daycare met all of the CUP criteria in our Unified Development Code. So the planning commission held a public hearing on the 13th, and they recommended approval of the CUP. So tonight you're being asked to adopt a resolution approving the CUP with the conditions, which are very general in nature. They're standard that we do for every CUP. So there's nothing really unique to this proposal. So I'm available for questions. The applicant is also here tonight as well, if you have questions for her.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Are there any questions for Dan?
I was at the planning commission meeting last week and have no questions. I thought it looked, they ticked all the boxes and...
Yeah.
Real excited for that facility to come.
They've been very easy to work with.
Yeah.
All right. Is our applicant available? Would they be willing to come forward? Is our applicant available? No?
No, not here.
Not here?
Oh, I thought that was her. I'm sorry.
Okay. That's okay. It's not a requirement.
She was at the public, planning commission public hearing, but I'm not sure why she wouldn't be here tonight.
All right, very good. No more questions for Dan? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion if I could. Like to make a motion for the resolution approving a conditional use permit for a child daycare facility.
Thank you. Brendan?
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Dan. Next we have our community development director, John Sutter, here again, as it were, to talk about establishing a one-hour time parking limit. I'll let him expound on it. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a slideshow, so, but this is pretty straightforward. I'm sure everybody knows where the new on-street parking bay is on Bass Lake Road, between Elmhurst and Sherburne Avenue on the north side of the road, along what is commonly called the strip mall, but it's not really a strip mall. It's a collection of physically, structurally separate buildings on legally separate parcels of land. It's like an old-fashioned Main Street. So we added the on-street parallel parking bay as part of the Streetscape project. It is heavily used, however, there is persistent, longer-term use of it that we discovered by doing a parking study in late March, on one of our rare snow-free weeks this last spring. And so based on that and discussions with the Public Works Director and the Chief of Police, staff is recommending that you adopt the resolution before you, which would establish a one-hour parking limit for those 12 on-street parallel spaces, noting that it would be enforced on a complaint basis only. But we expect to achieve compliance in most part, in the most part, simply by having the signs in place. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Great, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead. Nancy?
I'm full of them tonight, aren't I? I was noticing, they said that in one of the studies, there was at least one vehicle parked for more than four hours. And you've said that this has all kind of been ramping up since beginning of this year, you've noticed, or started receiving complaints?
Yes, that's correct. We started receiving complaints this year, and it was one of those things where we didn't want to create a solution to a problem that didn't exist. So we got the complaint, we did the parking study. We're frankly kind of surprised at how persistent the longer-term parking was. We had no idea before. And, but the study confirmed that, and that, and it's, there were many moments in time, usually during the peak business hours, when four or five of the spaces would be occupied for a car there for several hours. And, I mean, that's a real problem, and definitely contrary to why we put those spaces in in the first place.
Sure.
Which was for convenient, short-term parking for customers.
And just to follow up for enforcement, how would, you know, and Chief Reverend could maybe address that.
Mayor and council? So usually how we do enforcement on a complaint basis with regards to vehicles is that we will chalk the tires, and then if we go back within that hour or two and the car's still there, then we will tag.
You will tag them. Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you, Chief.
I have a question for the chief.
Go ahead, John.
How much is a parking ticket nowadays?
Great question.
Put me on the spot, councilmember. I'm going to say it's about probably between 60
and 70 bucks these days. A portion of that goes to Hennepin County, a portion of it goes to our city.
Yep, okay.
And I, to follow up on that too, final question. Will the businesses be receiving notification then, that this will be enforced?
Yeah, we already did a letter that we hand-delivered and then mailed to those that weren't open when we were there, explaining that we were going to be considering this at tonight's council meeting. Didn't get any comments from them, but we'll do another letter when the signs are about to go up. In the letter we provided a couple weeks ago, we said, you know, once it becomes effective immediately, as soon as the signs are in place, and we expect that'll be sometime this summer, we don't know exactly when. So because we were so vague about it, we feel we would need to do another, more specific, more precise heads-up. But we would contact them again right before the signs go up.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Therese?
There's no, there was no pushback from the business owners, or did they have any, say one way or the other?
No, and I was frankly surprised by that, because it's clear, I'm not going to name names, but I kind of know which businesses are parking in front of their store long-term. But they didn't, didn't object in person. I mean, these are people that I talk to in person often, and they know me from repeated visits during the Streetscape project. I think it may have simply been a matter of, well, it was good while it lasted, right? As long as there was no law saying I couldn't park there all day if I wanted to, why not?
That's right.
But they understood that the law might change, and the rules might change, and I think they understood the reasons that we were looking at changing it. So that's my guess as to why there wasn't any pushback.
All right. Olga?
I do want to thank you, John, for keeping such close contact with the business owners and being a well-known figure there. So I feel like, you know, it's good to keep that communication going.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you. Looking for a motion?
Is there a motion?
Olga?
I'll make the motion, yes, to approve the establishment of one-hour time limit for the on-street parking bay on the north side of Bass Lake Road.
Thank you, Olga. Looking for a second? Brendan?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So next we have a resolution authorizing the 2020 and 2025 utility reconstruction feasibility study. We have our, not our city engineer, we have our city manager, Ann Norris. You want to address the council on that?
Thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, staff has been working on our long-term financial plan for all our capital funds, including our utilities. And as we work through that, we also need to start working on some streets that some of you will know very well that need some attention, but also the, more importantly, the utilities underneath them need some attention, starting in 2020. So to develop our plans for timing of reconstruction of those utilities and streets, we need to do a feasibility study. And so we'd like to do the first phase of our utility reconstruction study, and that's what this proposal is for. I believe it's $132,000 coming out of our sewer and water fund to figure out which streets will be done, timing for those streets, and the estimated cost for those streets for the next five years, 2020 through 2025. And the contract is with SEH.
All right, thank you. Any questions on that one? Go ahead, Nancy.
Was the feasibility study for all phases correct? Okay, I just want to make sure. Right, right. Thank you.
Good clarification. All right. I will make a motion on this one. I will make a motion to ordering the preparation of the feasibility report for 2020, 2025 utility reconstruction. Looking for a second? Anyone? Olga?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, that was our last item on our regular agenda. We do have some announcements, however. The Met Council Airport Commission, MAC, is holding a public hearing at 6:30 p.m. on Wednesday, May 29th, in the council chambers at Crystal City Hall, to receive comment on proposed environmental assessment worksheet for proposed changes of the Crystal Airport, starting with an open house at 5:30 p.m. and a presentation at 6 o'clock p.m. There's some neighborhoods in that area who might be really interested. Is this where they're going to discuss some of the water flow stuff?
I think it is more about, pff, Anne, improvements to get rid of one of the runways and the impact to the airport. So I assume that would be an implication of that?
I would think so. John, do you know? Not sure?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so MAC's own term for this is called rightsizing the Crystal Airport. The number of operations don't justify, in their view, two parallel primary runways. So they're going to take one of the parallel primary runways and turn it into a taxiway, which has a number of benefits in terms of airfield safety, in terms of fewer crossing points where planes might collide, that sort of thing. So there are a number of benefits to that. It will still have one primary runway, that's northwest to southeast, and it will still have the crosswind runways. But it, basically, one of the two primary runways will be converted to a taxiway, and then there's some other minor changes in addition to that.
Will there be an opportunity for the residents to kind of describe some of the issues they're having with drainage on their property, or is that not appropriate for this?
So, no, it certainly is something that should be brought up, although any drainage changes are kind of being handled as part of the CAW process. So if, are you, if you're thinking of the areas along Douglas Drive...
Yeah.
Where the water, yeah. I think that's kind of a bigger-picture problem that I, I'm not qualified to address. I don't know enough about that. But, but there are changes all over the airport property of different types. So certainly residents should attend and let the MAC know whatever concerns they have.
Yep. Thank you for commenting on announcements. Appreciate it. Kind of highly unusual. Next item, the next city council meeting is Tuesday, June 4th, at 7:00 p.m. The council chambers here at City Hall. Crystal Airport, Open House, and Fly-In will be held Sunday, June 16th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then the CBA will meet Wednesday, June 19th, at 8:30 a.m. at St. Therese. That's 8,000 Bass Lake Road in New Hope. Local organizations are invited to lead the pledge of allegiance at city council meetings. Contact staff for information on that. Reminder that work sessions and city council meeting, you are welcome to attend. Also viewing and listening is available on our website. Are we, do we have any other? Nancy?
Jalen Bale.
Jalen Bale. There you go.
Thank you, Councilmember LaRoche. Jalen Bale is tomorrow from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at our Neighborhood Outreach Office. You do not have to be signed up to attend. If you would like to turn yourself in to the Crystal Police Department at the Outreach Office for a fundraiser for the Crime Prevention Board, all funds go directly to the Crime Prevention Board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. See you tomorrow.
One more thing, since I see Michelle Strand in the audience, and I just wanted to find out how the Crystal Fund for Community Progress plant sale went last Saturday. I was there, but it looked like a lot of the plants had sold.
Would you be willing to step forward?
I'd rush up if I goes to talk.
You'll be just fine.
Mayor, councilmembers, how are you?
Great.
I'm Michelle Strand. If you don't know me, I'm on the Crystal Fund for Community Progress, which is a nonprofit that raises money to help the city parks. And so our current focus is the Becker Park, specifically the playground. And so we had the Cheers to Crystal event, and then we had the plant sale this last Saturday. It went really well. The weather was cold, but Minnesota Gartners are pretty hardy, so they showed up in droves. Between the two events, we'll be able to, we'll be right around $5,000 that we've donated so far to the city for Becker Park. So we're pretty proud of that, considering we're selling plants. And so next year, I hope to see every one of you there, or else give me some plants to sell. So that was good. I appreciate it. The city staff was awesome. City, the Park and Rec, John, Elhome was great. Everyone helped a lot, so we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it? Looking for a motion? Nancy?
I think John went first, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It wasn't an arraignment. Go ahead, you got called out.
Arraignment, yeah.
All right. John, seconds. All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned. Have a great week. We'll see you next month.